Good evening and welcome to the December 1st, 2021 School Committee Meeting. Tracy, everyone is in attendance. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item of business on our agenda is our student representative, Angela Champa from the high school. Thanks for being here again.
Thank you for having me.
You fill us in, what's going on?
Of course. So hello, thank you for having me. It's so good to see you all again. So at the start of the month, 80 seniors were inducted into the National Honor Society here at Wilmington High School. It was very exciting. We had a great ceremony. All four of the NHS officers spoke, as well as our advisor, Ms. Tucker, and it was very nice. There'll be a spring ceremony as well, which will include the juniors who are inducted, and the seniors will be present there as well. This fall ceremony was a makeup since the seniors didn't get the ceremony in the spring when they were juniors. We also had our NIASK visit, which you guys know about. Students who are part of the Peer Mentor Program and our National Honor Society gave tours to the teachers and principals who came and saw our school the day they arrived. And many students across all grades met with the visitors across the three days to discuss their experiences at Wilmington High School. Our WHS Lamp Lighters Drama Guild put on their production of Clue on Friday, November 19th and Saturday, November 20th. The show was a hit. It was a great, it was an amazing show. They always do a great job. And we can't wait to see what they choose for their spring musical. The very same weekend, members of our DECA chapter traveled to Boston for the ultimate DECA power trip, which included people from all 50 states, as well as Spain and Germany. 12 members attended the conference where they met and learned from people nationwide in the business field. There were different presenters from companies such as Whataburger, which is a food chain in the South and West, as well as Men's Warehouse, to learn about supply chain management. And we were able to attend panels and listen to a ton of real field experience, which was great for students. Everyone also had an opportunity to participate in a competitive event. There was 1,400 people competing, and from Wilmington, we had one person medal, as well as one person score a 99 out of 100 on their role play. So it was very impressive. We're very excited. We have our district competition a week from tomorrow. We have 106 kids attending, and we're hoping that we're gonna have a big turnout for states, and I'll be able to report back to you guys with lots of competitors for states. We also had Spirit Week that week. It was a very busy week. Spirit Week was November 18th, 19th, the 22nd, and the 23rd. Students participated in Neon Day, Class Day, Anything But a Backpack Day, and Blue and White Day. Class Day was divided amongst the four classes. Everyone voted on Google Classroom. Seniors chose Beach Day, juniors had Comfy Day. Holiday Day was chosen by sophomores, and the freshmen went with Blackout Day. The display of spirit was amazing. It was great in the office every morning, watching all the students walk in. Especially on Anything But a Backpack Day, students were very, very creative, and teachers especially loved that day. It was very different. It's something we've never done before, so it was nice to get out of the stereotypical Spirit Week we usually have. November was also Kindness Month, so during this month, we had kindness quotes shared on our morning announcements every morning, as well as our sad club made gratitude turkeys, which you may have seen in the halls with different feathers of what students are grateful for. And they sponsored a discussion about the attitude of gratitude during advisory periods. Our fall sports wrapped up in the final weeks of December. Girls varsity soccer made it to the second round of playoffs, as well as football. And field hockey played in the first round of playoffs, but sadly was defeated. Our football team finished the season on Thanksgiving. And our band also performed their final marching band routine for the year that day. We recognized all our fall teams at the pep rallies, and students had a great time encouraging their captains and seniors playing tug-of-war games together, as well as classmates playing musical chairs together. It was a very intense game. Our winter sports started this Monday with tryouts going on all throughout the week. We also have a number of winter athlete commits to colleges, including two of our winter track runners, Celia Coolis, who has committed to Holy Cross, and Amanda Broussard, who has committed to Bryant University. We're very proud of them and can't wait to see what they do this season. Members of our Student Council are gonna be attending the NEMAS Conference tomorrow. NEMAS stands for the Northeast Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. They put on a spring and a fall conference, where students lead workshops about stepping out of your shell, how to use your leadership skills, and different ways to make your student council productive. So we have nine students going, and we're very excited to see what they bring back to our council. The council also plans to set up the Giving Tree in the main office, which will include ornaments of things that different families in the community need, and they're usually donated to the fire station in the community. And tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, the high school jazz band and band will be performing their concert. And as well as next week, on Tuesday, December 7th, the high school strings orchestra will be performing. All the musicians are very excited. They put up the orchestra shells in the, on the stage. So it was really cool to play out there, and the group is doing a joint piece. They're playing sleigh ride together to get everyone in the holiday spirit. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. I have to say, I love outside-of-the-box type of thinking and Anything But a Backpack Day. That's awesome.
It was great. We had kids, kids had cereal boxes. Someone had a sled that they taped everything to, so that was really creative.
So how do you, how would you, like, I'm thinking of all the things that you need, you know, from class to class. How do you get it all in a cereal box? I mean, I know Chromebooks are nice and compact, but, I mean...
I think everything being on Chromebooks mostly helps a lot.
Okay.
And kids also had things in their pockets. That's where they kept their pencil case, so.
It was a Costco cereal box.
So then I, okay, now I got a better visual, because I'm like, they're awfully skinny now. I'm thinking a Market Basket size, so. Thank you very much. That's awesome.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
I just gotta do a quick shout-out for the cross-country team. They were division champs. And so I just wanted to point that out as far as the fall sports.
Yes, I think the girls made history going to all states this year.
Fantastic.
Thank you, thank you for keeping us updated. I don't know how you include it all, but, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
All right. Our next item of business is public comment. Mr. Ragsdale?
We have no one signed up for public comment tonight, and I don't think I see anyone who is inclined to give any. Anyone want to give a public comment? The committee received two written public comments, which we have read prior to this meeting.
Five, approval of items by consensus. We have approval of minutes, November 17th, 2021. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Plowman, seconded by Mrs. Burns. All in favor? That is almost unanimous, one abstent. We have approval of superintendent goals. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have approval of nurses' substitute pay rate. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That's unanimous. Payroll ending 11/24/2021. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That is unanimous. All right, item six, superintendent's report. Dr. Brand?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of items tonight. One, only one item accompanying the packet, and I'll start with that, under DESI updates around student health and safety. The Department of Education recently released an update for their ongoing list of FAQs or Frequently Asked Questions the week of November 15th. That is posted on our website and is included in the packet. Specifically, I think that the item of note there references children ages 5 to 11, and how things shift with that age group, as they are now eligible for COVID-19 vaccinations. And not at all unlike the older age levels, children who, once children ages 5 to 11 who have been fully vaccinated, if they are identified as a close contact for COVID-19 and are asymptomatic, they will be exempt from testing and quarantined, similar to the older ages. So I wanted to certainly just bring that to your attention. I will take the opportunity, though, and there's nothing to accompany this in the packet, but just with this opportunity to share with the committee and our community that the town of Wilmington is absolutely seeing a surge right now in COVID-19 cases. This comes after consultation with Ms. Newhouse from the Board of Health, as well as Ms. Brown, who, as you know, is serving as our interim coordinator of Health Services. I'm told that there are 153 positive cases in the town of Wilmington, and with that, the majority are school-aged children. Recently, just earlier this evening, in fact, have learned that we have 40 students who have tested positive since Sunday in the district. Most of those are between the K-6 level, not at the high school level, specifically 3, 4, 5, 6. So it is becoming certainly a broader concern, not only with the positivity rate, but also the impact on close contacts and, you know, from the test-and-stay aspect to other aspects. So I do think that we are at a point where we are going to have to collaborate on messaging. There is absolutely growing concern around community activity. Specifically, over the last few weeks, the decision by the Board of Health has been made to quarantine multiple youth sports teams. And the understanding that I, that I've certainly been led to believe is that unfortunately, the guard is being left down, let down, rather, it sounds like, by many who, as activity has moved inside, have not necessarily, in many cases, been following the masking suggestions, specifically amongst the younger ages, where vaccination is not a, not a reality for them, at least not yet. So whether it be from carpooling, indoor sport activities, birthday parties, et cetera, there is absolutely a firm belief that that is leading to what we're seeing, unfortunately, around the positive numbers. So this is, I think, an important time and a good reminder for, for our community that I will try and work in concert with the Board of Health and Ms. Brown to message to our communities. And we'll continue to work through this. I know we're all battling this, but these are numbers that are concerning and certainly we'll, we'll watch closely. I'll pause there if there are any questions.
Mrs. Burns?
Are we doing contact tracing? I know that at one point, Ms. Newhouse was no longer doing it. How are we doing, how are we doing with that within our school?
Well, up until the last, I would say, maybe few weeks, it's been manageable. We are managing it, let me be clear. But it's, it is becoming far more burdensome. The Board of Health has, I think as of today, brought on board, or will be bringing on board, some additional assistance. We, we should be able to tap into some of that for some support. And we are also hopeful that some of our nursing, our current Wilmington Public School nurses who have been on leave, hopefully will be coming back, and that will, that will aid our capacities to do that as well, too. But if these numbers continue to climb, it's going to become a real significant issue. It also is something we're gonna have to watch, quite honestly, around the test-and-stay aspect. We've been able to monitor, or sorry, we've been able to manage test-and-stay within the schoolhouse, and our nurses have been doing a great, great job doing so. But if these numbers continue to climb, that may force us to reconsider how we're gonna approach that, whether that means a different location, whether that means a different process. But something may have to give here in terms of what we're asking them to do, our school nurses, and that is complete test-and-stay for a growing number of kids. First part of September, October, whenever this started, we had very, very small numbers. These numbers are not small any longer, and it's becoming certainly a whole other layer on our school nurses that we're gonna have to maybe think differently about. So I'll certainly have to, I'll share more with you. There's nothing to change course right now, but it certainly may get to that point. There is that possibility.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, changing gears completely to a different topic. Oh, sorry, was there? I'm sorry.
It was just, it's related to COVID and vaccination and our partnership with Cataldo, with the clinic that just happened. Just as a point of feedback, that was not a real smoothly operated process. People who had appointments waited over two hours. So I'm just concerned that people may delay their second dosing or skip it altogether to avoid that scene again. So I just, I don't know if plans are being put into place to, to make that. And I know that the second round will go more smoothly, because people are entered into the data system, et cetera. But that was kind of a nightmare.
Forgive me for not, I should have included that. And yes, I'm well aware, we are well aware, that that did not go well. Ms. Brown, almost immediately after, was, was on this and pursuing, I think, Alice, another, another partner for the second round. Apparently, that same agency has experienced also difficulties in other communities as well, too. That's my understanding. So plans, I think, have been solidified for a different vendor or a different partner to provide the second round for us. But thank you.
That might be reassuring to the community to know that we were responding to that situation and addressing it for the second go-around with that.
Yeah, that sounds, did not go well. I hope the community recognized it's something we're facilitating in terms of scheduling. Unfortunately, we, we didn't have a specific part or role in it, but nevertheless, I can appreciate the frustration that, that many endured, unfortunately. The second item unrelated to COVID, just very briefly and quickly on Mass School Building Authority or MSBA. There's a, there is a brief memo in the packet tonight, just to provide the committee and the community with a brief update on that. We, we held the first, sorry, the second meeting of the Wildwood School Building Project Committee recently, November 16th, in fact. We came together again to specifically discuss our communication plans that will span the next couple of months, leading up to special town meeting and the hopeful support of the community to secure funds for supporting the feasibility study. So plans are well underway, and we are really on the cusp of rolling out communication to try and, to try and bring awareness across our community to what this unique and very important opportunity is for the town of Wilmington and for our school system. And that's obviously our partnership in the MSBA project. Things that we have in place and that will be launching soon or pushed out soon will be written communication. We, we have a couple of different formats for that that will hopefully be helpful for those that want to read further about it and become more in tune or more informed about it. We are going to schedule probably a couple of open houses, if you will, at Wildwood School specifically, to allow any members of the community who may wish to come and visit the facility and to be able to see firsthand the current state of the Wildwood and why it is so critical that this be a priority for our community. We are also going to use, we had a video segment that some of you may recall we used to submit to the MSBA previously. We're going to use that same video and also shorten it down a little bit. I think it was around 10 minutes or so in length, but also make it a little bit more of a bite-sized clip and push that out. So we're trying to come at the communication from a few different vantage points and really have, you know, essentially two months, two and a half months to, to really elevate awareness community-wide around what this is. And I'll just take this opportunity, and we'll continue to do so, and bring attention to the fact that Ruth really is a partnership, or sorry, a pursuit that's more than just the Wildwood. What we are intently interested on is exploring school consolidation. This comes as a recommendation of the Facility Master Plan, and this is, this holds greater importance and far greater impact than just on families that may be attending the Wildwood. This is all of our current and future elementary families, so it is a really important project for us to continue. And not mentioned in the superintendent's report, but, report, rather, but just to, to take the opportunity to draw attention to and extend thanks to a recent community donation for the Flutie Foundation and Beyond Podcast, Anthony Petrelli of Wilmington. They have, they have a few students, children, that are going to be attending the Wildwood in December and have very kindly given a donation to help support Bring On Board Communication Boards, Playground Communication Boards for Children with Autism. And so thank you so much for that kind donation that will benefit many at the Wildwood community. And with that, that concludes my report this evening.
Excellent. Any questions or comments? That brings us to old business. There is no old business. We're moving right into new business. Item 8A, we have status of student well-being concerns. Presentation, Alice Brown-Lagran and Christine Murray.
Sure, yeah, as they, as they make their way up. We, we have this item here before you, and there is, there is an accompanying presentation that the speakers will go through tonight. And this item is here because we, we recognize as a leadership team that this continues to be certainly a very challenging, difficult time for many. As I know, many, many members of this committee watch and monitor headlines within education, public education across the state and across the country. It certainly is not lost on any of us that the challenges that are being experienced as we continue all to make our way through the ongoing pandemic remain incredibly difficult and challenging, and we are absolutely seeing that manifest itself in a variety of ways amongst youth. And unfortunately, the headlines that some of us are seeing and hearing about are taking their toll and are, and are here within our community, arguably not unlike, I'm sure, any other community that we can reach our hands or touch. So we wanted to take the opportunity tonight to really bring some focus to this and to, to be open and certainly transparent around the ongoing struggles that our staff and our school administrators and our families have been enduring over the last good number of weeks, months, arguably. And just talk a little bit more about this within the specific context of Wilmington and Wilmington Public Schools. With that, Alice.
Good evening, everybody. It's been a while. I wanted to take a second, because I think you guys have not had the opportunity to meet Sula. Sula Busios is our new coordinator of special education, about six months now, but still new, nonetheless.
Thank you for coming.
She comes to us from Methuen Public Schools, where she was a special education administrator, and the Lowell Public Schools, where she was a team chair at a district and a district team chair for a long time. She's also a licensed social worker, so it's been quite the year for her to jump in.
Pleasure. Thank you for coming.
So we have kind of a, you know, kind of a, starting from like the 30,000-foot view. I'm sure you've looked at the packet a little bit, in terms of looking at the data around mental health for students. The data looking for, you know, data really specifically to the kind of 2021 year is really not kind of out there yet, but there is some preliminary data coming out. So we thought we'd talk a little bit about kind of the national-state view and kind of really how's that affecting us and on kind of like what our response has been and what maybe our response is kind of planned to be. So, you know, just kind of in looking at some of what's happening. You know, Dr. Brand referenced this a little bit. As you can see, there's been lots in the news about student mental health. Certain, there's lots of violence outbreaks in lots of the schools in Massachusetts and nationally. You know, I think it's very hard to kind of identify what that is, but we know for sure that the last couple of years has affected everybody, students, families. It's affected resources that I think families have access to, the level of stress, the inconsistency of not knowing necessarily from one day to the next, what's, what is hockey gonna look like? What is school gonna look like? I think all of those things kind of take its toll on everybody. And then, you know, about 10 months ago, I guess, Christine and I, I think, were here talking about panorama and the SEL interventionists. I think Christine and I kind of took a look at what was happening, what the kind of progression of what was happening last year was, with really at most parts of the year, about half the student population really in the buildings, and had a lot of concern that coming into a year, kind of coming back, that the impact of the pandemic was gonna be much longer term than just kind of getting everybody back to school. Even with our kind of trying to think ahead, I think we never thought we would be where we are right now with students and seeing kind of people struggle the way that they are, both in the community, certainly our students, but I think it's kind of all of us to some degree. So, you know, we've kind of been talking to Dr. Brand and all of Central Office kind of about the challenges that are going on. And I think, like Dr. Brand said, it's kind of time to kind of mention it to all of you guys and let the larger community know kind of what I think is happening in the school district. So, you know, some information here about kind of what, in general, is being seen. But I think, you know, even though if we're talking about what's happening in Massachusetts, what's happening nationally, we're seeing it kind of inside the schools as well, even in Wilmington. When you look at data, which I think it's important to look at, even from the kind of the 19 to 20 year, 2019 to 2020, you're seeing significant increases just in through the year of 2020 of emergency room visits for suicidal ideation or suicidal attempts for students, for kids. Some of them ranging upwards of 30 to 50% increase, which is significant. You know, we know that the pandemic certainly had an effect. I don't even know what the 2021 stats would look like to this. I would be very nervous to even guess, but I would guess that they were higher than what we're seeing here. You know, the, any, the American Academy of Pediatrics, for those of you that don't know, in October actually declared mental health in children a national crisis. So we were in a state of emergency. Not only in respect to the amount of challenges that kids are presenting with, but also the fact that we don't have the resources to necessarily match what is happening for students and giving students access. And it's really across the country. It's not just in a place like Massachusetts, where there's a lot of people in kind of a condensed, you know, area. It's happening across the country, that the access to all mental health care, whether it's an acute bed for a student that's in immediate psychiatric crisis or getting counseling for somebody that maybe isn't quite there, but actually needs the support. The family needs the support. The access at this point is very limited, because of the providers are not matching necessarily the amount of people that are requiring it. So, you know, I think that that is also a struggle that we're seeing, which we're gonna talk a little bit about. It's also one of the reasons why we kind of pursued the Care Solace and William James piece, and Christine will talk a little bit about that in a second. We did, you know, we partner pretty heavily with the, the community, so we have a very good relationship with the police department, but also with Samantha Reeve, who is the social worker through the police department. We did ask her for just kind of their take from the community. We are certainly seeing what we see. They're seeing similar. They said the, the increase of just behavioral health calls for families in crisis, for students in crisis, is really way up. They said it's probably under-reported at this point, because of the way that they code them. But the amount of students, they said, they gave a statistics, which I thought was very interesting. In two-week period in September alone, there were 10 calls for suicidal ideation plans or intent to, you know, across all age brackets, they're seeing that's up. I would say that I would agree with that when we look at kind of what's happening inside the schools. They're seeing, you know, all sorts of increases in substance abuse, the effects of trauma, just the general mental health needs of everybody is up. Families are struggling, you know, grandparents raising grandchildren at a higher rate than they've ever seen before. Children caring for parents that are struggling, either with substance abuse or kind of other challenges, and children caring for other children. Things that have always existed, perhaps at a higher rate in other communities, are certainly here at this point. And I would say that we're, we're seeing similar kinds of needs across families across the district as well. You know, I think our relationship with the community agencies is key, because while we have all the students, this is a larger issue. This is a much larger community issue, kind of what's happening. So, you know, I know this data is not positive, and it's sometimes hard to read, but I think it's important to kind of see what's happening in the larger community. You know, they're having difficulties, you know, have parents having difficulties with children that are in complete crisis, whether it's a behavioral crisis, trying to get them services, the police. And, you know, Samantha will help. Not always is there availability of beds to get kids, or adults even, the supports that they need. So it creates a situation where you have no place necessarily to help these students. They're back home, still struggling, still coming to school. So I just wanted to kind of start talking about kind of the larger viewpoint. Christine's gonna jump in just for one second and talk about what this is looking like in our schools. We're gonna circle back around to kind of what we're doing. That's okay.
Yes, so as Alice mentioned, you know, I think we recognized as a district prior to COVID that mental health was kind of on the rise, so now really seeing the impact. I think the quote from the Brooklyn Center really sums it up, that it's, it's, you know, an immediate and a long-term effect of slow-moving trauma. We're in it. And we're, we're kind of experiencing that in a different way, collectively, individually. So we really have seen an increase in a partnership with the Wilmington Police and Fire. They have come out to the school more often than we have ever experienced. We do use the Emergency Psychiatric Crisis Mobile Team, and that has increased with service calls to them. And I think they are a little overwhelmed with the increase in calls as well. If a student is in, in crisis, they will have us call 911. So we have seen an uptick in, in our emergency response to both the mobile crisis team and emergency police and fire. We have seen an increase in our DCF involvement with, you know, families that are in need. I think being home from the pandemic, students are feeling safe and comfortable to come to school and really talk about their experiences. So we really are seeing an increase of DCF reaching out to us with, with concerns and really having that partnership. Our conduct data has been in an increase with difficulties throughout the district. Again, similar to what we see on the news, but not to that severity, I would say, in the district, really just students being dysregulated. Anything from bullying to fighting to the dangerous behaviors, not really being able to regulate themselves in that moment, and kind of not having those coping skills that we've really provided those students while they were in school. But we're really working as, with school-based teams to work on our structures and systems in place for PBIS and how do we kind of come back to looking at our matrix as a school system in our individual schools, looking at our core values, really reviewing some of those lessons that, that we've lost. So the schools are really working hard and the teams to really look at kind of providing... So, the schools are really working hard and the teams to really look at kind of providing students those skills to resolve conflicts and navigate really the social environment back at school. Yep. So, just recently, we did the presentation on the YRBS results. I just wanted to bring this a little bit to the attention of really those, the mental health and the reaction to the pandemic, that students are really reporting experiencing poor mental health at similar rates. In the Middle Sex League, over one-third of our high school students and one-fourth of our middle school students reported that their mental health was not good most of the time or always. And I, I think that's pretty significant and we are seeing that kind of playing out in the school. It's not just from those results. We really are, like I said, just kind of seeing that in, from all levels, but primarily a little bit more at the younger levels, the elementary school, children not having, again, those coping skills. I know this is data for the middle school and high school, but we've really seen an increase of students not really doing well at the younger grades. Looking at our SOS Signs of Suicide program, really educating our students, it's a program on depression and anxiety, so spending some time and really talking to kids about mental health and being aware of those feelings that they may be having. We did not screen our seventh graders last year due to the pandemic and being home for remote learning. So, we did take our eighth grade students for this year. Half of the students that are in the health class, the other half will be presented this in, in the spring, but just in November. I know Dr. Brand was able to come by and kind of see SOS in action. It was, it was really, I don't want to say alarming, but the numbers were a lot higher of the students that were coming out in red, which is an immediate automatic check-in with the clinical staff, really to assess, do we need to call our Mobile Crisis Team? We found out a lot of the kids were really checking off, you know, they wanted to talk to someone and it wasn't really, you know, the degree of, actually out of the 23.8% of the eighth graders, we didn't have one advocate's call. Kids just wanted to reach out. They checked off they wanted to talk to someone and that's one of the criteria that we do follow up. So, I, I feel like it's a proactive preventative program that was really, even though we had higher numbers this year so far, it's showing that it's working, the interventions that we can put into place. Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit more, like give us a sense of what is the SOS program? What does that look like in action? So, who's, what format do kids get, ask these questions? Who do they hand that off to? Are they clinicians? Are they teachers? Just give us a little bit of a sense of what that looks like.
So, the students take this program in the health class, but we have clinical staff, so counselors, psychologists, they come in. So, there's two staff members in a health class really talking about anxiety and depression. What are the warning signs? So, the health teacher has a background with that, the clinical staff does. So, they, we just got the new updated program. It shows some nice videos and walks them through different situations on if they were concerned about a friend, how would they help a friend, if they were concerned about someone at home. So, it's really an educational tool and then at the end, there's a few questions and we have criteria. So, if they were to answer questions, you know, four or more for, for one, you know, area that would constitute them being in the red zone. And like I said, that the clinical staff would follow up with them. And then there we have the team and we're all kind of responding to that. Yep, they answer it right there in the health class on Google Form and instantly we're responding and we're reaching out to the families kind of involved.
And the clinical team is monitoring the Google Form while the kids are completing it, so they know in real time who's actually coming up as critical or red, so to speak.
Yeah. So, just looking back from the other year, we were fully in school 2019, 2020. We had 14.8% of our seventh grade students. They're currently ninth grade. They fell in the red zone. So, we will be increasing our screening this year. Next week, we're working with the seventh graders, again, this semester, and then we'll follow up with both the seventh and eighth graders next year. We really want to kind of increase these efforts up at the high school level as well. That's our goal.
So, the district currently is facing, you know, some challenges just like other districts in the state, and we're trying really, really hard to sort of mitigate those, those obstacles. In special education, we are receiving a large number of referrals, some from parents, some from school-based teams. And these are typically related at this time to sort of, you know, pandemic-related issues in academic areas as well as social, emotional areas. At the same time, for special education, along with sort of the general classrooms, we are struggling to fill staffing vacancies. And that's primarily because there's just a pool of candidates that's really small and most of the times, they don't really have the necessary experience that we're looking for in the position that we're filling. So, it kind of sucks sometimes. But we do, but we do have some interviews, but it's not a good fit for what we're looking for and what we need. We are experiencing a shortage in school psychologists in the district and, you know, we were able to get this sort of, you know, quote from the National Association of School Psychologists, which is, you know, a shortage across the nation. And so, clearly, we see that here also. So, over the, over the summer time, we did have a few, a couple, I forget how many, maybe three or four school psychologists sort of move on to different positions. We were able to hire, you know, a number of those back, but we're still looking to fill three positions, which creates a big impact, you know, on our ability to sort of, you know, meet our timelines for psychological evaluations for special educations along, special education along with sort of the counseling supports that we utilize our school psychologists for. Again, we've had a number of interviews, you know, through this time. Half the time, the, the pool of interviewees are not qualified or, you know, they're, they don't seem to be a good fit. And then the other half, we don't, they move on to something different. So, we're just, you know, we're still struggling to fill those, those positions. Generally speaking, in the, in the district for counseling supports, we have, we are seeing an increase in social, emotional and behavioral dysregulation and just caseloads are increasing, increasing dramatically to the point where, you know, we sort of have to prioritize sometimes, you know, what we're addressing first. We are able to utilize all of our counseling and, you know, related resources in the district and trying to be creative and, you know, where we sort of, you know, focus depending on the day, depending on the week, so that we can meet the needs of the district and for each school as they come. Staffing vacancies, again, across the district in all areas, we seem, you know, to lack applicants and many, again, that apply lack the background and the experience. So, we're always sort of faced with a double obstacle here. Lack of substitutes, when teachers are not present for different reasons, we struggle, you know, to find substitutes for that day. Sometimes it's a day-to-day situation. Sometimes we're lucky and sometimes it doesn't, there doesn't seem to be anybody. And so, we, again, we have to sort of be creative and readjust our configuration to, you know, make sure that classes are covered and services are provided.
I think the other thing that sometimes gets overlooked is that when we're talking about, you know, the last couple of years, the last 19, 20 months of the pandemic, we certainly are focused on the students. We have to remember that the staff also is living through it. They have the same stressors at home. They potentially have the same loss of income from the loss of family members to COVID to, they've experienced all the same stressors to some degree that the students have. And I, you know, where they're coming and working with our students, sometimes with maybe not the same full toolbox that they had maybe prior to COVID. And I think that sometimes all of us, it affects everybody from bus drivers to administrators when we're kind of talking about that. So, you know, we've done some work, which we'll talk a little bit about because that is, that's a real thing. The, the stress that the staff has been under continues to be under and the impact that obviously has when you're having students who are also then dysregulated and struggling with the same thing that you might be struggling with. So, we put that on here as a challenge because I think it's a real-life thing for all of us at this point. And, you know, we're trying to kind of to address that, but I did want to put that on here, even though it's maybe not a concrete number attached to things like that. All right.
And so, more specifically for special education, the impact of the pandemic. So, the, you know, the last year or two with having virtual and the remote learning and just the educational disruptions, you know, either for quarantining or other reasons, we see the real impact of that in our students here this year more specifically and then really in their overall development. We see parents, you know, concerned about their children and their progress and their development as well. And many times, they will seek, you know, they'll seek our advice and they will seek our supports. And so, we're trying to do, to respond to those as best as we can, given our limited resources, our times, and trying to prioritize to meet, to meet the needs. Through our general ed supports and interventions, I think we, you know, we have a systematic way to try to find and identify students who are struggling before they get to special education so that we can start to provide tiered interventions and try to sort of mitigate some of those struggles, whether they are receiving special, special education or not. So, again, you know, increased number of referrals. We are receiving, you know, a number from parents, but we're also receiving them from the school-based teams. And those tend to be primarily for social, emotional and behavioral dysregulation. Those are the most challenging cases that we see in our buildings. And sometimes we struggle to sort of figure out exactly, you know, what supports are necessary to be able to support the needs of the students, the needs of the classroom, the needs of the schools. So, we also have an increased number of referrals from private schools. So, Wilmington families who have, whose children attend private schools, they are also seeking out our supports and our resources because they're faced with similar concerns. So, we kind of see them across the board. I'm not sure exactly what that number was, you know, in previous years, but it seems like almost, you know, every, every week, every other week, we're getting one or two or three from private schools.
Or prior, if we did eight a year, I would say, that would be a lot. So, not for students that maybe have a plan, but for an initial evaluation for a student placed at a private school is unusual.
You know, again, hiring challenges in special education. So, you know, we are, we're trying the best that we can, you know, to interview as many people as apply and trying to be very thoughtful about the decisions that we make to make sure that, you know, the, the pool of candidates that we have are actually appropriate for the, the openings that we have. Just some numbers to put things in context or perspective, I guess, at this point in time. The total special education evaluations from the 2020, 2021 school year, last school year was 391. So, those were the total number of evaluations that we completed. And this year, we have projected so far, based on our numbers currently, that we're going to be completing 500 to 600 evaluations. So, that's, you know, just looking at that number alone is sort of eye-opening, you know, and, you know, we know, knowing what's coming ahead for this year. I think we all sort of thought that this year was going to be somewhat normal or more normal than the last two years, but it has proven to be a little bit more challenging, you know, for all these reasons.
Is the 391 an uptick from 2019, 2020?
Yep. So, it would include any evaluations that were not completed, right, as part of the closure from the spring of 2020. So, it was the highest that we, that I've had on record since I've been tracking it in the five years, six years that I've been here. And so, the swing of five to 600 seems like a lot, a big swing. So, if you do it just based on how many per month we've been getting, it's about 520, I believe we would expect. That's not how special ed referrals typically work. You always have a bump on the second half of the year for referrals because kids are in IST and they're working through and parents typically refer and IST teams will typically refer the second half of the year. So, if you roughly factor in a bump, we're closer to about 600. So, it is a swing of about 100 students, but it's significantly higher. When we think about kind of the impact of that, that's testing of all of our special educators, testing of all, most of our school psychologists, potentially speech people. There is a pullback from service delivery. We've been able to manage that at this point. I'm worried kind of as we go down the line a little bit. At this point, we haven't had service disruption. We've pulled in a couple of additional school psychs, part-time to do evaluations here and there. It's, it's still challenging. And we've had to kind of reconfigure their positions a bit. Okay. So, there's a lot on this slide and some I know we've talked about. You know, when, when we were kind of looking at last year, going into last year, should I say, one of the things that was clear because we had closed in March of 20 was that, you know, we had about a third of the district that hadn't had their reevaluations completed because we were not in school at that point. We had kind of closed down. We knew we were going to be in a situation where, you know, teachers were going to be adjusting to this new normal, which was going to be kind of the hybrid slash remote piece coming into last year. We made the decision to add an academic assessor for the district to try to take some of the load off of the special ed teachers, hoping that that would be able to be last year and not have to keep it. When we saw the numbers climbing for referrals, the second half of last year, we just, we had actually kept it for this year. And so, it's, it is a moderate special needs teacher who does the academic assessments for eligibility. And honestly, with the numbers that we have, that's, that are going on, we need it at the moment. We've had such an increase of mental health needs, behavioral needs in the buildings that we've been contracting with a couple of BCBAs to provide supports in addition to our own BCBAs in the district at specific schools where we have just pockets of students that are struggling, that the buildings are having difficulty maintaining, making sure that everyone is safe, develop plans and utilizing enough people to implement those plans and having somebody to come monitor them. At the moment, we have three BCBAs in the district for the whole district. So, we have one, two different, kind of giving us different hours from an agency. As well as we've hired a couple of counselors, we also have the vacancies of the school psychs so that they can make sure that we can maintain the special ed services and the interventions for classroom interventions like responsive classroom and doing, you know, second step and kind of those things that the school psychologists in some of the buildings were having trouble doing because they had so many evaluations to do and meetings, obviously, that go along with those evaluations. So, we've kind of backfilled with a couple of counselors. Those positions, they can't do the testing, but they'll be able to keep the services intact because we don't want to pull away, you know, all of our preventative lessons, all the PBI, PBIS lessons, all of the, the things that we teach kids to be able to prevent them from, you know, to have some coping strategies to prevent kind of the dysregulation. So, we've been able to do that. You know, I think that the schools have really been able to kind of take a look at the panorama data and identify where they need to do some lessons with some of the students. Particularly, elementary schools are working on switching their folk, you know, we're certainly academic focused, but kind of really focusing in on kind of what are the, the strategies that the kids really need to know from a social, emotional perspective and kind of really kind of using some of the PLC time to kind of come up with a plan around that because I think they see the drain of the resources in the building that's just a small group of kids is having and that this kids need more across the board. So, you know, that obviously will help everyone. We, again, put in the social, emotional learning specialists last year. They've actually touched bases probably more than this now since the time that we actually collected the data, but they had reached out to over 150 families directly in addition to supporting our students that are in crisis, supporting staff in some cases. They do lots of what we call them coffee chats, but it's an attempt for the staff to be able to get together and talk about their stressors, things that they might require because we are seeing the, the staff stress across the board and trying to get ahead of that a little bit. They've been also able to kind of help with the Care Solace connections for families in addition to all of our clinical staff, as well as done some, you know, positive psych, we did a professional development for the last staff meeting. Thank you. I was going to say CIT, but the last staff meeting where Dr. Brand brought in a positive psychologist to talk about self-care, talking about how to kind of, what to do to take care of yourself so that you're more available and how to kind of manage stress. And some of it was very simple tips, but sometimes I think we all need a reality check about reminding ourselves how to do that and, and how to do something very simple each day that might just change your outlook on how things are happening in, you know, the world around us at the moment. And focused, you know, doing professional development kind of more for the rest of the year, looking at trauma-informed instruction, SEL, looking at practices that support kind of concrete strategies that the staff can utilize with, with students in the classroom as well. Am I missing anything?
I think we talked about the PBIS a little bit.
Our piece with the community agencies is key. You know, we have a lot of students that have really been You know, we have a lot of students that have really been screened or assessed by advocates or the emergency room who are really struggling to get supports. And that connection with some of the community agencies, whether it's, you know, Samantha Reeve at the police department or advocates themselves, Care Solus kind of working collaboratively to be able to try to get students the support that they need has been important. Care Solus has been a great resource. I know you're going to kind of mention that a little bit, but the amount of time they're taking on cases to set people up with supports is incredible and given the.
Yeah. Overall, the feedback has been great so far from the clinical staff, families. I would love to get some more input and potentially put a survey out. But yeah, I think we're running into the same issues of kind of finding the providers that are matching up with, with our families and, and trying to continue to provide as many access to services for them. It has been a little bit challenging in that area, talking to their representative, but a lot of it is through telehealth. So just trying to find more local agencies to support the families. But so far so good.
So there's really kind of two. In reading the challenges and such. So pre, recently, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees had a resolution about bringing school-based clinics into the schools for, for students. I didn't know, granted, this is not an immediate thing that we are like, oh yeah, let's just do this. If there's a way we can expand our partnerships and resources with Mass General, Winchester, Newton-Wellesley, in addition to Leahy, to see if we might be able to supply something consistent within our schools for that talk therapy. They can work, I think, you know, I, it just popped to my head. So I, you know, if, you know, but the thing is, is I, I think bringing it in and to make it more accessible, but, but keeping privacy at bay. I, I think if we can find something either through the resident programs at these, these hospitals, I think perhaps if we can make that connection in the Department of Psychiatry in these hospitals, seeing if there would be someone, one of the psychologists, CBT therapists willing to at least consult, which I think would also bring in an additional level of professional development and/or resources for classroom staff as another aspect. It doesn't work for all kids, but sometimes that positive mind change. Cause I think the biggest issue is, is the application, it's applying what we know. We know what's good for us, but, and I say this as an example as a mother, you know what I mean? You do so much for others. You just don't know how to, yeah, I know I should, I should, I should. It's just that trouble of applying it and then applying it consistently. Because I do think the mental health of our staff is, is vital in the success of the resources that we're referring our students to. Because students come in, they're the foundation of our schools. You know, they, the consistency and having consistency of staff, of teachers, knowing that, and those expectations and that structure is so vital in trying to get our kids to change that corner and to support them in those challenges. You know, you, it's, having inconsistency only creates more. It's like, you know, it's, it's like, you know, slippery slope. You can't make any progress if you don't have something consistent to base that work on and base that, that need on. So I really would like to, to explore. And I know in a lot of the urban school districts have such things like Framingham, Everett, to see if there'd be a way we can bring resources into our, our schools with, whether it be out. I'm thinking more after hours because I don't think we can really accommodate anything during the school day per se, but still make it accessible for students and staff. And I, you know, not know with the numbers climbing up, I don't think, you know, supports for our staff. Like I think yoga is a great thing, whether maybe it's something offered before school or something, I think, or offered after school, just to, to give. So then, so staff is not running around, having to go to their yoga class, go to their workout, but to offer something here even at the beginning of the day. You know, I think it would, I think maybe it would, would help with collaboration camaraderie. You know what I mean? I, I say that as a possible solution to that piece, but I, I just think, and I know everyone is stressed because I think healthcare in general, we're dealing with the same shortages in throughout, across the hospital and department. So it's no surprise. And then those people who aren't working, their caseloads have only tripled. And to be effective is another huge ethical and moral concern of the providers that are seeing these kids and, you know, and knowing that, you know, they play such a vital role, but they can't lose themselves in the process. So it's, you know, it, it is. And so if, if we could try to, you know, meet more of the masses, you know what I mean? Whether it be person of the hour or something and have maybe, I don't know if this would even be feasible, appoint person in the schools so that students who do come back, they don't have to relive the whole story. The notes would be, appointments would be made that, you know, or I don't know what that'll look like, but that they'll have a reference to go by so that they could start, you know, make a, a warm handoff for the, for the session. I don't know. It's, it's just a thought. I think it's a, it's something that we, I think, really seriously should look after to see if we can supply more thing in-house. Why not an environment that they feel safe at and they're familiar with? I think it has a lot of benefits if we can find that. I know there's always money tied to everything, but we can, you know, if we were looking to something like that, whether it be through the research aspects of it, you know, of getting so, you know, I, I'm not sure.
Yeah. We, we're in actually.
I was just going to say, we just had an interview with the community with Winchester Hospital and kind of from each department, town hall, the schools, the police and fire, and just really from our perspective, talked about the mental health concerns in all of our domains and how the hospital could best support us. And that was one thing we did bring up is how could we collaborate?
You know, we do send someone to the emergency room or how could their staff, well, kind of, and their heat, our staff on, on your protocols and work together.
The thing is, is as you know though too, as, you know, as a parent with two special needs kids and luckily I've not have to end up, but even prior to the pandemic, you know, getting a bed for a child with a mental health issue in crisis, I know families in Wilmington that have spent a week in the emergency room, calling state reps and there's just no bed available. This was a crisis before this crisis. And so finally seeing that attention and, and those gates opening up a little bit more. It's, it's not anything enough.
We're also looking to increase kind of our mental health systems and how we can best enhance that and bring in some CBT strategies, have a coach potentially come in and, and show us how to do the groups, you know, at all levels. So that's something we're pursuing. Also trauma-informed professional development through an agency. And we just applied for a grant for that. So there are things that we're pursuing just to educate the staff a little bit more with.
I think bringing that resource, bringing in the schools to collaborate, I, I think, you know what I mean? And to help mitigate, I think, even the work that was done throughout the day may help alleviate some of that pressure. It's, I mean, it's a lot to, to, you can't minimize what is coming through, through your department and into what's occurring within the schools. And, and my biggest fear right now, because I've, in the past, one thing that we're, we're, I think, is the school students and, and to see what transpired this week is absolutely horrific. And whatever I think investment we can make into opening more services just to avoid a potential issue, it's just, I just think it's, it's worth it and it's the best investment we could offer our students and our staff. So thank you.
Just wanted to, one reminder, we do have a partnership with McLean's Anxiety Mastery Program that we've had. We're in our sixth year. And so they work with all of our clinical staff. They also work with our sub-separate social, emotional programs. So when Christine's talking, we're talking more kind of expanding it to staff that wouldn't be fall necessarily in that, that category. And then at the high school, we have the Bright program, which is really kind of what you were talking about, that kind of home-based connection when a student might be coming back from a hospitalization that helps them kind of coordinate. It's, you know, has a social worker that's part of that program. That becomes kind of the hub of supporting that student as they transition back to school.
Right. Which is, I think, vital in general. I'm just that straightforward though, talk therapy, I think, is just, I think, where the.
And our, yeah, our SEL specialists are going to be, you know, they run some PD. They're going to run parent groups, kind of run around a variety of topics for the second half of the year as well. Hopefully to kind of boost, you know, just the, it's okay to come out and talk about things, right? It's okay. It might be uncomfortable, but it's a good opportunity to just listen to other people's thoughts on things. And, you know, even if you come and listen and maybe don't participate, that's also okay. We're going to try to do them virtual and in-person. So it gives people an opportunity hopefully to participate one way or another. I agree with you. I think the challenge is going to be exactly what we were talking about. I know when we tried to expand McLean's a little bit, their capacity. And that was kind of even two years ago when we were looking to try to expand it. They really moved and contracted this year. We're really struggling even to kind of like include all the districts that they've, you know, we were kind of a beginning member of that whole idea of the school consultation model.
Be a great research project though, if, you know, one of the partnerships with the hospitals would, you know what I mean? Put it out and if it got funding to support the provider and, you know, I just, I just think it may just be an avenue.
Mrs. DePommel? Thank you for everything you're doing. I think that, well, I have a lot of questions and thoughts, but I'm going to minimize myself here, sort of slow myself down. But I think MJ spoke to the importance of how we're taking care of our staff because special ed cannot possibly capture, you know, all of these kids and their behavioral health needs. And we really need all the staff in the building to feel equipped and able to respond to kids. So, you know, I think that, you know, this is more of my, I guess, my question for Dr. Brand is, you know, being able to understand, like, what methods are we using to assess the staff needs? And just to monitor staff morale and really identify what, what do you need? You know, we talk a lot about self-care and these kinds, these kinds of ideas, but my experience in schools right now is that teachers need, you know, logistical supports and are feeling a little tapped out on sort of these self-care, yoga, mindfulness opportunities and really want to see, you know, boots-on-the-ground kind of help. And it makes me think about, I think, what Christine was speaking to, I think, in one of our previous meetings and just a teeny bit here tonight, which is, how can we systematize, is that the right word? Our behavioral health protocols in the schools in terms of meeting every kid's needs, you know, at a tier-one level? As opposed to needing kids to go through this referral process for special education and evaluation? And it's just so, it just takes so long, right? And we don't have the resources to do that. So this is a longer-term goal, but I think of things like our referral system. Like how do we, how do kids get referred for counseling? What sort of flags a student to say, this, this student has a need here? How are we doing that? How are we tracking data on that? If a child has a behavioral incident at school, does that streamline them to, you know, to receive some counseling support? And then I even, so I think about our referral process. I think about our documentation systems. How do we, you know, if a student is, you know, flagged in the fifth grade, but then they move to the middle school, how are we tracking that as a district? As this student may have needs that we need to follow? And without a sort of centralized documentation system, so like our, our nursing staff, I imagine have a documentation system where any nurse in any building can access a student record in one spot. I would love to see Wilmington move in that direction for mental health as well, not just physical health. Because then we can do a better job at being able to follow students through the system and identify what their needs are and incidences or risk assessments that have been done on a student so that we're being really thorough in our, in our process. The other thought that I'm having about this is talking about CBT, which is cognitive behavioral therapy, which is one of the most evidence-based practices for anxiety and depression management. And being able to do more skills-based, goal-focused counseling with kids so that we are really getting our, the bang for our buck in a sense. That when kids are sitting with clinical staff, that we're really focused on what is a goal, almost similar to IEP types of work, but a kid that's not on IEP has skills-based and goal-focused counseling meetings. So that tends to be more short-term and it tends to be more effective. And I find it to be appropriate for school-based counseling. So I just think that we can reach more kids that way. And I would, I would love to encourage a district to look into MATCH through Harvard and Judge Baker as a, a protocol or something that our clinical staff could potentially look into. It, you know, it's, it would definitely be an investment for the district, but potentially very valuable in terms of just thinking about how are we using resources? The question that I have for you is, I think you've done an amazing job providing families with opportunities. We talk a lot about the community involvement. I don't think we can emphasize enough the important role that families play and that the school, I said this last time, schools cannot, this cannot all fall in the laps of school. So how have you been feeling about family engagement? So you've offered a lot of these virtual workshops and these support opportunities for families. Are they being attended and well-received? Or should we be thinking of other ways to partner with families?
I think it has varied over the years. I would say if we run anything on anxiety, it's very highly attended. That's the typical topic that I would, I would say that, you know, even over the pandemic was probably the, and behavioral strategies at home, I think, was the other one. That was very much attended. Even prior to that, I think we had one night right before we closed actually, where the Anxiety Mastery Program came out from McLean's and did a whole night. We had almost 100 people, which is a lot for us. But it is variable, honestly. I'm not sure why that is. I think, you know, I would suspect some of it is just not feeling comfortable necessarily when you, you know, it's hard to run a very large topic like anxiety because then you've got preschool parents there, you've got high school parents there. When we narrow it is when we start to have trouble with attendance is one of the challenges that we've had. We've, you know, tried to have, where for the second half of the year, we have Lauren and Erin, who are the SEL specialists, looking at, you know, trying to actually be boots on the ground and kind of recruiting families to come, which is something that has been very difficult to do. Sometimes our school-based counselors would do that if they knew we were running something and they thought a parent may benefit from it. But I think that's, you know, having two people that kind of are a little, their roles are a little more open is potentially one way of getting more people in. It is very topic-dependent in my experience. I don't know if you feel the.
And I think the timing too, you know, with the pandemic and people being burnt by the end of the day. You know, offering the virtual has, has been a nice avenue. We're hoping to do both, but now with some of the increasing of the numbers.
Right.
There, in January, there will be some mental health support, wellness support for parents, emotional wellness, anxiety and depression, social, emotional learning at the home and coffee with the counselors. So we've done that with staff and I know the SEL folks want to do it with the families and that would be in-person, just to have more of that intimate gathering. But we're always open to suggestions. Parents can email us, reach out at any point if there's anything or a topic that we're not thinking of that, that might be useful. So we're always looking for different ways to engage families. Food always works too. But that hasn't, that hasn't been an opportunity lately that we have.
I think it's, I think it's hard. I think it's one more thing to do. They were, I, I mean, I, myself as a parent, like, oh, I'd love to go to that. And then like the night kind of comes and you're exhausted, you know? I think more, all of us are more exhausted maybe in the last couple of years than, than ever before. So while the virtual, I think, is great, I do think for some of these topics, you do lose something. Not being in the room, being able to, you know, as a presenter, read somebody's body language and, and to be able to follow up on things that you would like to, that when people just on Zoom. that when people are just on Zoom or on, it's on Zoom but not on Zoom, you know, screen-off kind of thing, so.
Something, when I think about engagement, I think about some of the events I've attended over the years, and I always wish it was sort of suited for both me and my child, like, both of us. Like, as I go home and I'm like, hey, here's what I learned. And so, I wonder if, and that also takes away sort of that childcare piece that I know we've discussed at length, like, how do we provide? Are we providing childcare? Are we not providing childcare? What do we do, you know? But there are many, especially when we have, with those who are four, three, and up, or maybe even before that, where I would like to be sitting there with my kid. Like, I would like it to feel like we're in this community together, we're doing this work together, we're learning together. So, I don't know if that would help, but that's just sort of my own feedback on some of the events that I've, I've attended. You know, we met last night with this new parent group, the PAWS group, and there is a real push for, they want greater engagement. They want to be more engaged. And there's those of you who, it was Joe and Jay, right? And there's this feeling of, where do we find this information? How do we know? What sorts, what sorts of things are happening? What is PBIS? And I'm like, oh, we do this all the, we, so it's like, how are, are we really as transparent with what we're doing in buildings? And is that sort of message being sent from everyone? Like, are, are the teachers using the same language in their open houses? Are the principals using the same language in their memos? Is it, is it sort of this, are we really surrounding families with this, or does it feel very piecemeal to them? My feeling in that meeting was it feels very piecemeal. That's not how I feel, but I get to sit here, right? And I get to access it. Now, everyone has access to it. I very often just send people our website. Here it is, here it is, you can find it here. Like, it's just sort of, and I don't actually think our website's all that difficult to navigate, but yet, there's this piece that people feel things are hidden, and they don't know who to contact. And so, it's this, we're very open to it, email us, let us, but there's still this, this barrier, and I can't quite figure out how to do a better job bridging. So, I think this PAWS group could be really instrumental in some of this work to really, like, we're all going to go as a group, they're going to put it out on their fist, but everyone's gonna, you know, I just think that we have so, we, we offer so many wonderful things. We talked about this last night in this meeting. There are so many of these things happening. Someone mentioned something that happens in another town. Do we do that? We do do that. Like, but clearly, it's not being broadcasted in a way that parents feel they have access to. And to me, that's on us, not necessarily us, but it's, that's on the district. Like, what, how can we do this in a way that feels more just open to families, you know? Is it sort of too district-y? And so, then the schools have to be more involved? So, I don't have the answer, but it really is something that really keeps me up, like, what are we going to do about this? And I think sitting in that meeting last night made me feel it all over again. I'm like, oh, my goodness. So, it's like, I just want to send them this, to say, put this out, put this out. But there's got to be, there's got to be a better way, and I, I don't know, but I just sort of throw some of those ideas out as we start to think about, really, I completely agree with Mrs. Plamen. This is a community issue. This is something that we have to all rally around. Like, I would love for Wilmington to be at the forefront of that. Like, we are doing this work together, we're doing this work with Samantha, we're doing this work with the police, we're doing this work with the, like, we are all doing it, but are we doing it in a way that looks really, like, like that to the families? I don't know, you know? Sorry, Mrs. Plamen.
I just, I think it's a really good point, John, and I think that so much is happening at, like, the district level, at like your level, but I don't know that the messaging is going out from building administrators. Like, I would love to know what the SEL initiatives are at the middle school, because I have a middle school child. Then I could bridge home and school by having conversations with my child about what is happening on the SEL front at school. And that just starts a dialogue, but I can't do that kind of probing if I don't know, right? So, I think that, that, that's a great starting place, perhaps, is talking with our building-based administrators and making sure that they are letting families know what is being offered right now.
So, just thinking, because I know some people, and I, I totally can valid, can understand and validate the dilemma at hand. I know there's some that get too inundated with emails, that you're gonna, you're just gonna fall into the other sector. People are just gonna be like, eh, 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 after a while. I just, I, I think it, it has, it has to be, and I just say I don't have the solution, but I think whatever the pathway looks like, it's got to be balanced. And I think the websites are, are one of the main focal, one of the main focal pieces that any community member can access. And whether or not there's a, an app or, I don't, that even parents can maybe sign up for the app, or, you know, if there's a, like, we get a weekly update or something like that, just little highlights of what transpired. Not to add one more thing onto administration's plate, you know, but you, you want that central location, yet you don't want to barrage people who are looking for, okay, what's the vital things I need? And, you know, some of them just, you know what I mean, don't focus on the fluff, and then they get resentful, and then they know, they miss a really important piece, because it's just too much. So, I mean, it's trying to find a balance, may not be a perfect approach, but I think it's good to think about, it's good to problem-solve and, and navigate, but it's, it's really balanced.
One of the things, one of the parents said last night is, kind of, we're getting behind a campaign. If it's sort of this, like, this is what we're doing this month. And so, it makes me think as a teacher of, like, integrated units, like, we're studying this, like, and students, then they know every part of the day somehow connects back to whatever it may be, right? And our, there's a, there's some real value in that, like, really connecting, so that everyone who walks around somehow is saying, like, this is what we're doing this month, this is what we're talking about this month. And so, it's not just, it's not just in this room, it's not just in one school, but it's really across the community. And I think then parents can kind of hang on to that and say, oh, how are we, we're, we're behind this, like, we're getting. So, I don't know if there's some value in that, like, this idea of this campaign where parents can very much get behind, I want to do this, I want to focus on this. It gives me sort of like, a, it gives us a focus, I guess.
David.
I'm really happy that we're doing as many of these things as we, as we can, that we have this 10-point list of, we're doing this, and we're doing this, and we're doing this, and we're, we're trying, trying our best to address many of these issues. But I think we also need to realize that we can only do so much, and I think that a lot of us, I probably can't find myself among them, really certainly hoped and probably thought that we get kids back in school full-time this year, and that that's going to solve so many, so many problems. So, I don't know, they're with their classmates, they're with their teachers, they're going to be socialized again, they, you know, so many things that we felt that they were losing last year when they were either remote or hybrid for so much of the year. And, you know, it was probably just overly optimistic, and we wanted it to be true so much that, that, you know, it's a little, a little disappointing that the problems don't more solve themselves by trying to get back to a better, a little bit more of a system of normal. And it really, really, of course, it makes sense, because there has been so much loss and trauma. I mean, the fact is that, like, most, I think, families, like, know someone who has died of COVID, and, or, you know, know someone else who's, you know, it's like, are the connections run, you know, run very deep that way? And so, there's only so much that we're going to be able to do, and we need to do everything we can. But we also, I think, need to have a certain attitude of just kind of pull ourselves together as an educational community, that we need to have kind of grace and patience. I mean, I know that, and I'm glad that you've also mentioned that the, you know, the teachers are under a lot of stress and that there are, you know, certainly mental health. It's not just the students, and especially this comes back, I think, to some of the understaffing. You know, we think of that as, oh, well, we don't have the people in place that we need to provide, you know, everything we want for our students, that's the reason we have staff, is to provide these services. But anyone who's ever worked in an understaffed team or an understaffed company knows how that works, that the people who are there are just kind of pulling more than their weight and are, you know, covering for, unfortunately, the bodies you don't have to do that kind of work, and that's, and that's very hard to do as well. And, you know, again, we have to tackle this as best we can, but I think it's also important that, you know, parents have patience with teachers and with their own kids, that, that, you know, that the teachers have also patience with the administration, who is, you know, again, working incredibly hard and under stressful circumstances to try and do what we can, and that there's the, you know, the technical things in the programs that we introduce and, you know, all the stuff that we've talked about here tonight, and some of it, I think, has to also be an attitude of just, you know, that we're in it together and we're getting through it the best we can, and that we need to, you know, have grace and patience and forgiveness for each other, and attitude can go a long way, too.
I'll just, instead of rehashing a lot of what's, I think this is a really important conversation, and thank you for, thank you for the presentation. I think the, the view, sort of like the big view, national view, state view, and then sort of narrowing it down, I think, is really, it's really helpful for me anyway, to sort of remember that these are issues that aren't just, aren't just school-based, they're Wilmington-based, but they're Massachusetts, and they're, you know, across, across the nation as well. One of the things that I was thinking about, too, as I was, as I was looking at this, is the, is the jump in the referrals for special education and thinking about, and then I think it says that it's emotional behavioral dysregulation is one of the main reasons for the uptick in referrals. And I guess I'm sort of wondering, what are the districts, sort of district-wide accommodations or plans that are in place, you know, sort of like tier-one level, for specifically for emotional behavioral dysregulation? And maybe, I guess my suggestion would be, you know, maybe that could take, we take a look at that and, and maybe try to do some refining of that and some updating on that, so that some of these students who are getting referred for that, you know, those referrals might, you know, might go down if they're, if the accommodations that they're seeking in, you know, in the, in the form of an IEP, they can actually get, you know, just in a gen ed class, you know?
So, I mean, we, we have a D cap, and certainly all the schools kind of have a, you know, we have a referral process for, you know, gen ed counseling, so to speak. I, I think the referrals, whether it's school-based or parent-based, is to some degree a response, a picture of the level of stress people are having, also at home. You know, the students, when we talk about students in crisis this year, and the data that we have around those students that are really struggling, that we, you know, have had major crisis calls on and some significant events with, most are actually general education students who, who maybe have, were remote last year, or were not even in the district last year, or are not even on our radar a year or two ago, which is unusual. We, we have a lot of sub-separate social-emotional programs, so typically the population of students that we struggle with fall, kind of in that realm of students to this degree, that's actually not what our data is at the moment, which is unusual, you know? But I agree with you. I think we, it's a time to kind of look at panorama data and incorporate it into all of our tier-one.
I'm going to stop us here, because I'm sure we could keep going, so, thank you very, very much.
Appreciate it.
Continue, but we do appreciate all, all the work you're doing behind the scenes and in buildings, so, of course, being safe and, and forward, so.
You guys as well.
Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, this was a memo.
Safe and supportive schools grant.
Thank you. To Dr. Brand, for the Safe and Supportive Schools, we are pleased to announce that the Wilmington Public Schools has been awarded a fiscal year 2021, 2022 Safe and Supportive Schools continuation grant for code 337, which is through the Safe and Supportive Schools at DESI. And primarily, it is $10,000, so it is a district award. It goes to a lot of our PBS initiatives, professional development, enrichment programs. Shawshin was a receipt of this last year, and we really want to expand our efforts over to the Woburn Street, and then to the Sisters, I'm sorry, to the Receiving School, I always say that wrong, going to West. They will work on an enrichment program together. Girls run all social-emotional-based activities that we talked about tonight really kind of fall under this funding, too. So, we're very fortunate for DESI awarding us this opportunity.
Congratulations.
So, that's good news.
All right. Thank you all.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, in your packet, you have the FY '21 end-of-the-year report. This report identifies every penny that comes in and goes out of the district. It's a report that's due to the department end of September, mid-October each year. So, it's just for your information, just to, to see where the funds came from and went. Yeah, there was nothing out of the ordinary. I mean, just a few additional grants that we had to deal with COVID-related and so forth, but everything was just normal.
Very good. I'll just, if I may, take, the irony in this is that we always pass through this so, so quickly, and yet, it clearly is a testament to the attention to detail that this man to my left, as you all know, takes. So, thank you for, it's a 30-second soundbite, I think he did it in 20 this year, but all of the work that goes into this, you know, and, as a committee, certainly as a superintendent, we are incredibly fortunate to have Paul at the helm of the finances. For those of you that have been around the table, you know this certainly better than I, would thank you to him for his stewardship in all of this.
Thank you for bringing that up, because I think it's such a vital role, and it's, it's the operations of the whole of the, the district, and I know how much Paul loves his job, so I thank you for staying with us and all the work and time and energy that goes into your reports. It's greatly appreciated, it truly is.
It takes a lot of work to bring it all to a conclusion such that there's nothing more that needs to be said.
He works hard at that.
Subcommittee reports. Well, we met last night.
Yeah, we should.
Pause. I think I sort of gave a little bit of an indication. Specific to share, but we will. Anything there's really?
Yeah, I'm trying, I think there's, I mean, I think you pretty much shared most of what the discussion was about last night. Would you say so?
We're good. All right. But once we have, once we finalize those, we'll bring back more points to you that need your attention. Anything else? Any other subcommittee reports?
Well, the equity.
Subcommittee met.
This evening.
Earlier this evening, we just, we're just kind of discussing some of the problems of the equity audit, making through some of the next steps, exactly what it is that we've sort of drawn out of that.
The significant investments, so we're just making sure that we're going to get exactly what we want out of it for spending that money.
We don't have a proposal for you yet.
We have some work to do between now and our next meeting, and then we're actually going to meet again before our next meeting on the 15th at 6 o'clock, that subcommittee will meet, and so we may have something to bring to you at that point, so, stay tuned.
I have a question about that. Will you be able to educate those of us less familiar with what an equity audit, like a really thorough, comprehensive, valuable equity audit would look like, and sort of help us understand what we should be looking for?
That's, yeah, that's.
We aim to.
That is, that is, that is the majority of what our, our conversations were, is, you know, what, what are we looking, like, what are we looking for? What do we want? What is it that we want to get out of, out of, out of the, out of the audit?
There are a few, not many, but, well, we found a few public audits online, I think. I would recommend anybody taking a look.
Yeah, you take a look.
And we can, we can have Glenn send that out in his end-of-week updates.
Yeah, we saw there's several, several towns have it on.
You can find some. So, I think that's, that's where, where some of us are starting, kind of there, to see, is this what we want? Do we actually know some of this, and we sort of need the next piece? Like, what, what do we want us, what do we really?
I got nervous, like, when we saw, like, the scale of cost and thinking, like, ooh, do we want to go with that one? Because what if the, you know, the one that's so low is just, you know?
That's a lot of what our discussion.
Unuseful, you know, to us, and so.
It's, it's, it's looking at the, looking, you know, like, if this is the cost, what, you know, what do you get out of it? And so, it's, it's, it takes, it's, it takes a lot more research than I think I thought. Was necessary, so.
Support with that, will you let us know?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we will. I mean, this week, we're.
We, we should, I would think that by, I would think that by next, by next meeting, I think we should have a little more information. I was kind of hoping that we would have more information to present tonight during the subcommittee report, but I think. but I think we realized that we need, we just need some more, some more stuff. A couple more next steps.
Checking and some of that stuff. So I'll come back to you with some of that information for sure.
I'm just thinking outside the box. As a possible suggestion to consider is I would, I look at states like New York and Michigan, who are big drivers in a lot of educational research and things of that sort, to see if their school, if there are any school districts under those states who may have done so. Because I think it may be, it'll offer you a nice comp, compare and contrast, you know, in a different area. It may, it may just open up ideas as to what we want to see in ours as opposed to looking at those that are done just in Massachusetts alone. Because usually you get bogged down with only a limited amount of companies that may be doing it, and they do it one way. And we, you know, if we're looking at what, what do we really want to get, what bang for our buck, then at least in the RFP? Thank you, that's what I meant. The RFP, then we can build that into the RFP, you know, with a little bit more finesse and detail in that realm, which, you know, may offer a, a, a better idea as to whomever does put forth a bid, you know? But I'm just, I just say that as a.
Excellent suggestion. Thank you.
Correspondents? And this evening.
We have December 9th is the Town Finance Committee meeting, 7:00 PM at Town Hall. Please let Tracy know if you are going to be there. I'm assuming you will be, but if you, but if you'd like to let her know, that would be helpful, just to have a account. Sorry, do you care? It's always nice to know who's, who's coming. So I would say if you are not coming, maybe, maybe email Tracy and copy me. December 15th is our, our last 2021 school committee meeting here. And then we start up January 12th. We have a regular session meeting at 7:00. And then January 19th, again, at 7:00. And we know that that is back-to-back, which we tried not to do, but we had to do, and I can't quite.
We, we modified that schedule. We originally had the 26th of January scheduled, but to work in sync with or align with the town manager's budget presentation, which is on Monday. I forget the exact date.
It's the 24th.
24, yeah.
So we removed the 26th from the calendar.
In hopes that you'll be there on the 24th. But we thought putting the 24th and the 26th.
Having it back-to-back-to-back would be a little bit too much.
Might just be ridiculous, so. That's why. Now it's all coming back to me. I was like, ah, we definitely can't do that, so. But please add those dates to your calendar. Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn for the evening.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Samaha, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Good night.